All right, good evening, everyone. All meeting orders for the Wells break due by in the school district at six oh four. I will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the citizens of America. Let's do quite a lot of words of protest, automation, ergot, individual, whatever you have to spell. There are motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, I make that motion too, but it does still sound like you guys are not a hundred percent crystal over there with the audio.
And you also somehow turned your camera off.
Can you hear us to speak right into the mics?
Yeah, we can. It's just sometimes it doesn't, there's like a weird reverberation or something.
How about now? Can you hear me better now?
Could hear you. There's like a little, there's like a weird echo or something.
We have the mics in the same room, so that might get some feedback. I don't know if that's it.
Okay, well, let's try it.
Okay, on the, on the agenda, should we add an item regarding your grants? And we're looking to look for matching funds under your business, your finances. I think we're going to take up sillyies. Okay, it's on my end. And there is one thing I wanted to add under new business. I had a request from the chair of the select board of town Wells for requests. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Here we go. All those in favor of approving the agenda with that addition, say aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Yes. All right. General public comments. There's nobody here. I see the, I did receive your email, Laura. Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight during public comment? All right, Laura, go ahead. You have three minutes. Your beauty.
All right, can you hear me? Yes, all right. I'm going to open up my screen and read the prepared comments. I will email this to you afterwards so that you'll look at the references. Hello, you can, I can talk now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for your work supporting our children, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Laura Darren Dinger. My professional background is as a public health nurse. I'm also the mother of four children ages twelve, eleven, eight, and six. There are no conflicts of interest, financial or otherwise, in what I share with you tonight. Since two thousand eighteen, I have been a volunteer member of the National Screens in Schools Working Group, which is part of the larger nonprofit advocacy organization Fair Play, formerly known as the Campaign for Commercial Free Childhood, which was established in two thousand. The Screens in Schools Working Group that I am part of is an all-volunteer, multidisciplinary professional group of parents, teachers, lawyers, mental health workers, child development specialists, physicians, psychiatrists, and nurses. Our group curates independent peer-reviewed research on how exposure to digital devices and online products affect children. Our specific advocacy focus on, focus is to support schools and communities to use online and digital products in a way that is supported by industry, by independent, not industry-funded research. We want the use to be intentional and effective in teaching. There is currently a free tool, which is what I want to share with you tonight, which can help us and help teachers at schools when they decide to use digital and online products. It is the first and only research-based model for how to use this in a healthy way in a classroom. The framework is called the EdTech Triangle. Any of you can access their material for free. It's out of an organization called everyschool.org. It's a, it's a volunteer nonprofit organization. And I'm sharing this resource with you right now because it's appropriate for all of us adults to be concerned with how digital technology and internet-based platforms are used with children. If it has not yet been done, the exercise of asking three fundamental questions might help us understand where we are with use of these products in the classroom setting. The first question is, does the product work? Has it been vetted by independent education experts and studied to show that the use of this computing device or online platform outperforms teaching the same subject when taught on paper or by human teachers? The second question is, is this product actually physically safe for children? Have independent experts familiar with physical and mental health evaluated a project for safety with regard to physical, emotional, and mental health? And three, does the product comply with existing laws to protect? For example, the attorney general of both New York in two thousand nineteen and New Mexico in two thousand twenty-one sued Google for violating children's privacy related to the data that they collected from Google Chromebooks, Google Classroom, and other Google products that are used in schools. Human Rights Watch, just this year in May of two thousand twenty-two, produced a report showing that most online platforms that are used in schools across the globe violated children's privacy. The lead researcher for this report from Human Rights Watch summarized by saying children are forced to pay for their learning with their fundamental rights to privacy. So unfortunately, when we scrutinize the independent research, the above questions, the answers that we receive are not reassuring. Studies replicated to verify interpretations suggest that as more computers and screen-based devices enter our classrooms, learning declines. This is a trend in the United States as well as in sixty other industrialized countries. For the question of is this product safe, abundant research again shows negative health outcomes that accompany use of electronic devices by children both in and out of the classroom. This ranges, this is a list, but it ranges from physical brain changes. We talk about dysregulation of children, when we see behavioral problems, depression, anxiety, and the extremely concerning association with the addictive properties that are associated with screens, especially the gamified platforms such as the commonly used ones that are used even here in Vermont, like Prodigy, that claim to teach math. There's loss of vision, obesity, sleep disturbances, hearing loss, and musculoskeletal symptoms. So going back to sort of the positive resource that can be used to help guide decisions, the best results for our children will come from following what the independent research suggests. And luckily, the EdTech Triangle really has done a lot of the hard work by scrutinizing in detail this independent research to help decision-makers like yourselves and other school leadership make decisions so that when we put children in front of devices, we know that they're safe and effective. And in summer, with most other products that we put in front of children, we make sure that it's safe and that it works. So it would be appropriate to apply this same vetting process to the digital products that we use in schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, if you could email that information to superintendent. Distribute it to board in that manner. And, and also, I would, I would recommend to, you know, connecting with the assistant superintendent as well. We're also in charge of curriculum instruction. Thank you. All right. No other, nobody else signed up in public comment? Will you launch the defense of the last session? The motion to approve the agenda. Glad my name added to the agenda. Thank you. Pardon that correction, Susan?
Yes, I will.
Make that possible. If there's no other changes, all those in favor, approve the minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Warrants, we have warrant two thirty-eight, forty, and two forty-two. All of this was to be, uh, there's. To approve the warrants. Absolutely. Say again?
Do you want to make the motion first or ask a question first?
Either way.
Um, then, you know, I imagine this has to do with the timing, et cetera, of purchase orders. But there's a late fee for this is a credit card. Twice, there's one on two thirty-eight, and then there's one again on two forty-two, while there's interest charge. Yes, that's just the flow of business.
Yeah, we, we do our best to try to avoid the late fees and interest. The current procedure is that as soon as the purchase is made with a credit card, they're supposed to send the receipt to central office so that we can process it immediately in the next AP run and not wait for the statement, because if we wait for the statement, a lot of times it's, it's too late. It can miss it by a day or two. So, I mean, that happens most of the time where we, we get the invoices or the receipts and we can process them immediately. But that doesn't always have that, always, doesn't always happen. We have to try to track them down and follow up with the schools or the administrators looking for the receipts. A lot of times when we get those charges, we have to pay them, and then we, we speak with our rep to have them reversed. Because a lot of times it is just a day, day or too late. But you will see the charges, and, and then we do work with our rep to get those, just based on our volumes, try to get those, those fees reversed, but you wouldn't see that, the reversal on the warrants.
You should not have that. They got a follow-up in the shop because they're, you say, well, they were to do it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have a really hard time hearing and understanding.
Is this sitting on right or there multiple people?
Louis, the question was, is the same, is the same person doing the receipts or is it multiple people?
Thanks, Chris. So that, that time I heard you perfectly clearly. So I don't know if it's based on where the mic is in the room. So the, the receipts are sent by the, the front office. So each of the administrators have a credit card, and they, they usually work with their front office staff to get those to central office. We run accounts payable every two weeks. So, I mean, depending on when we receive the receipt, it's anywhere between, it could be two days until we cut the check or it could be two weeks. Credit cards usually only have like a twenty-day grace period. So, I mean, if it, if they wait two weeks to send us the receipt and then it takes us two weeks to process, it could result in it being a couple of days late. So that's why it's imperative, and that's based on the procedures, that they submit those receipts as soon as possible.
So I think, Louis, can you hear me? So I think I can answer that. So we had the field trip, the sixth graders. I think there's some issue with some of the bills, so I will take responsibility if it's not timely. We have to do some readjustments to hotels, so that could have led to possibly hold up getting the receipts in, so. And I can say that. I go into the central office, I can, maybe this is the only year where I have students. Like these.
Yeah, I had noticed them before, but then I saw two of them. Maybe I just.
Yeah, I, I picked up on two of them. Well, I didn't, I didn't think those could have been more, but. All right, are there any other questions in regards to warrants? All right. Motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll hear you. All right, all those in favor, moving towards, you say aye.
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 All right, superintendent. Thanks, Erica. Louis, can you guys hear me? Yep, okay, thanks. So a lot of information that I included in the package is information for purposes only. As we always have to do with SARM, a lot of SARM laws are related to our capabilities, perhaps, but you know, the team staff, for your dogs. Know that Rick and Carol have been doing very hard to ensure staff. I know that they can talk a little later about who we are. We've got a nurse combined, we have somebody who is a teacher who will be on earth for the night, which we're very, very good about, like, very refined, too qualified to reach this stage. So it's one thing, you know, Rick and Carol for their work and their diligence, they will certainly serve and the ladies in the virtual, I think our families, our students, we're very happy with, with you. Enjoy our staff, hopefully. There is an update on the wealth property transfer. I know for those of you who've been around twelve times, it's kind of same, was that same point. I did reach out to Jack BACU, who is the attorney, or is the attorney, who is still working at Wells, well, the board on this. He said that there's a bit of a delay that I'm using trying to contact, talk to Rasher. I also got that little John had stairs of D while we, or Jack were kind of set away there. But, you know, so we both saw that title next. Apparently found a work plan in two thousand eighteen that's. Dr. Jones, that's a, you know, still found this office, and we're, I didn't know about the job, Jack's line. Our work plan, where we're at, so hopefully we'll have some more updates. I know those of them who are. I haven't seen the right joke, so she wrote this, but we had him on for a very long time. Just give you the status of your. Yes. A second, there, that made a trip of, when you mean heard, right, from Wells. Yes, it's, so, yeah, it's essentially the town that the, the Wells Village Board. That was basically one of their last actions was to transfer property to the school of the tree. Before they even do that, back in, I think it was the nineties when this was passed on, that property was never transferred from town to the Wells Village School Board. At least if it was, they didn't have the appropriate guidance.
Is that been core minor and so?
Yeah, so it's, it's been on the process. Now we're, we're beating up against due, it's easements, you know, because we still have, you know, the, the septic system. So we need these easements, we have to drive away easements, so that's another part of the matter.
Oh, hey, I was just, we were, I think we were losing some of the audio there. It was getting a little bit garbled. Is it at all possible to move the, I don't know what you guys are projecting from, but move it closer to you? And then my question was, what's, what's the, the land that's deeded? I know you guys are talking about it, but I couldn't follow.
Can you hear me well?
I can, I can hear you, but you're projecting and you're looking right at us, and I think that's, that's working for you. I think for folks that are not turned towards the camera or whatever device is recording the audio, we're losing them a little bit.
Yeah, I think, which is in regards to the property transfer for the Wells property here. It's, it's been a process over the last four plus years. And essentially just been hung up on with lawyers and stuff like that, so. That makes sense.
Yeah, it's, it's cool. It's great that we're getting more property.
Is the issue that the Wells Village School Septic is on somebody else's land? Is that, is that the summary of it?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's the town, Village of Wells, but the MWA has like ninety-nine-year lease. And so the school district signs a easement or goes into, you know, some sort of, I don't know, easement is the term that they use, basically, if we need to fix it or, you know, you basically have that according to that. And that's also included in this roadway here. This, this roadway right in front is half owned by the district, but the other half is by the MWA slash campus. So it's, you know, there's a lot of workar pieces with this. And I think that's why it's, it's taken a long time back.
We, we've had a lot of meetings over it during post merger with the MWA, with Wells, and so. That's why it is really close to being done, but it is really long here. The well of all two.
Well, half the school that was on the second day of property, I hear out front, so.
Right, yeah, so that's where the well, I think, lived in.
So the crop path was never being, it's still part of town, and part of act, still was not really part of the school, it was. Long story.
Sorry. No, that's, no, that's, you guys have already spoken on this, and I, one, four, five, something. So, I mean, that's, yeah. That's it in a nutshell, so yes. Okay, so. Yeah, I mean, the rest, it's informative. I didn't, yeah, I've been retreats, and we had, we talked, the items we, we covered, went through. Do you know that, you know, Rick and Carol, myself, and Lisa Madison have signed off for instructional leadership year-long training this year to the University of Washington Center for Leadership Leadership. We are looking at, along with the, the admin team, that's two focal points. One is on the MTSS, which is the multi-tiered support, which is, which is sorely needed in all of our schools. And people really provide an opportunity for us to really to, to identify good, strong, let's call it tier one structure of best practice. So assuming, you know, high-quality structure in the classroom, and then the students are still struggling with the academic, socially, emotionally. We do have a resource to support a place to, for what we call tier two or layer two services. And so, but the MTSS will kind of refine the process, which I think will be found in all of our schools, not just at Wells and Old Town, but schools across the SU, is that a lot of students have been identified. I think it was well-intended, but identified for the same layer two or tier two services, which really could have been more impacted by just a shift in the way the classroom is set up, or, you know, the the learning or differentiation. And so there are individuals who are not receiving tier two instruction, who really should have been received tier two. So this MTSS model will really allow us, and we talked about the retreat, so assume, and what about student preparedness and where students are at, if they are falling behind, the MTSS system, homeless, so to identify these students as, and start to put together the support and resources and assist them as well. So, and then the second focal point was probably instructional leadership. We do know that the single greatest factor in student achievement, student learning, is the quality of instructor that's in front of them. And so our, part of our goal is, as building our students, to improve our circle leadership. That's the work we do with the staff, provide feedback, care, support, resources, identifying appropriate professional development and programs that are suited, you know, to their needs. We're going to kind of move away from the one-stop shop. All staff members receive the same professional development to really start to identify if a staff member needs certain PD, they will run that for them, while the staff members will have access to professional, professional development as more appropriate to their needs. So, so it's a good program, and it goes back to what I say initially. The University of Washington has the center, they jumped to the center for leadership as a year-long instructional leadership program, which really allows, this year will allow Rick, Carol, myself, and Lisa to do some really deep dive in terms of providing high-quality feedback to our staff, what that looks like, and shifting our models, not just being in a classroom, just during our subjective evaluation process, stay formal, formal walkthroughs, it'll be more ongoing, regular basis, and sort of this ongoing dialogue between Rick and Carol and staff, best practice, and what we can do, and how we can best support that. Any questions, Christine?
Yeah, just curious, does, does the interventionist have a, I keep, I don't know if I said that word correctly. I keep on mangling it, but do they have a role there with the multi-tier to like?
Yes, yes, exactly. The interventions will be key, be a key player in the layer two. You know, so that's where in the past, interventionists have been used, just baseball, and a teacher would say, hey, watch, you know, watch school read, who will work with this individual or this staff member. Now it's really going to be the interventions going to be working with individuals identified in true need of support or assistance. So they'll be working with a smaller percentage of students, but allow us really to do some more in-depth learning with them as well.
So that's a great question. I actually was working on the schedule today for the teachers to elaborate with the interventionist to be successful, and they have to have that conversation, what's happening, looking at data. So once again, it goes back to strengthening the universal as much as we can, trying things, testing, if it doesn't work, then take the next step, bringing the intervention, interventionist in. So I, I think it's going to be a great model. I think it's a great direction, both. And glad to be proud of it to share.
That's great, thank you.
It's that kind of question, F A, you, I've never heard of that before. Is that just another work or a viable or plan? For, maybe, yeah, it's just a, it's appropriate public education, so it's right on a special education. So as we look at accommodations, modifications, making sure that we had a really good festival that's with our geometry, with Bill Mason, some new drugs, to support on really identifying when a combination is appropriate, when a modification is appropriate. And we're looking at, so we may say, an individual says that I want my, my child to have access to this. So we look at, is that really part of what's on faith, you know, is that really a problem, you know, to, that child has access, learning? While a, you know, a parent may believe so, but the school may not believe that, so, so just circumstantial.
Um, Chris, that's a tricky argument. If one of these labels don't work, probably, or they do work, or however it wants to be played out, is it going to take forever for it to change? You start a program with a child, it's not working, how long is it going to take for you guys to figure it out that there it is or isn't working?
So the MTS model has six to eight weeks to try and something, but that's the conversation. I I I see these professionals, let's try this, say it's an academic, the child is having difficulties with double-digit issues, so it's what can we try uh to target that that area? If it doesn't work, then we try something else, and then if it doesn't, then it goes up to the next level to support that student.
Well, we're also scheduled um every day or every week, a two-hour meeting to discuss students and what we need to do with this, with the ESQs.
The first longer they have time, we go on the release, second one, because it's you got six to eight weeks to be working, getting back at the enough time, or is it too much time, no, it won't suffice?
So Sue, you're asking some really good questions, I think, when you, part of the MTSS model, and I think what say in last year, years prior, without the MTSS model, it really would kind of be a big mistake, and so we're trying something in there with no any goal in mind, and so it could maybe go two weeks, and someone gives up, or it could go on, or, you know, go twenty weeks. And with the MTSS, it really is these weekly ongoing discussions that we are asking not just the teacher, but this group of individuals that is part of this team, will be looking at data, will be looking at uh whether or not they see an upper trajectory, and if something's not working, we're interviewing a bit, same page is shipped.
That's fine, it's going to happen quick, so.
Yes.
We're having some time.
Right.
So this is the first line from Middletown Springs, I've actually had a designated two-hour time to have conversations, professionals outside, uh counselor, nurse, and bringing in people who we need. That is a designated time each week that I've set aside. So I I'm, I think that's a great addition that we haven't had. And uh yeah, so it's a work in progress, but I I think it's a good direction.
And although you're setting time aside, it's actually time that's necessary at most then, because it'll be really focused on the students.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to finance. Lewis?
Okay, so the the first thing I'm now going to go over is just a request that came up at the last board meeting. Uh, there was a question regarding our net metering. So in the packet I provided the the log that we are keeping at central office, which shows uh the month for each of the bills, uh with the amount of kilowatts that are being used and the the credits that we're receiving, along with um how much we're paying this the sun wells. So it shows our total savings, um, so our total savings for Middletown since July of twenty-one has been thirteen hundred dollars, and our total savings for Wells since July of twenty-one has been fourteen hundred dollars, so a total of twenty-seven hundred dollars. Um, hopefully that meets the 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 que- or the questions that, answers the questions that came up at the last meeting. Any questions on that?
So uh Lewis, the question uh Sue asked, how much was invested? The initial investment?
There is no investment, this was, this is a net metering contract, so we don't own the panels. Uh, we have signed a uh uh an agreement with the vendor, they're, they they built them, they they have all the investment. We just have a commitment of time, and I believe it's twenty-five years, I don't have that in front of me, maybe twenty years, um, that we've agreed to purchase the net metering agreement. Um, so our our only risk is that we don't use electricity for twenty years, um, uh, but that's that's really an unknown.
It's quite fine.
Twenty-five years, little?
Yeah. Twenty-five years to save.
The savings build too.
Okay, then.
The savings increase the longer you're in the program. It's not tremendous, but it is something, and yeah, it was a challenging discussion, so I got long in on grabbing, and we can get out of that contract, excuse me.
That that was, that was one of the.
It's not a penalty. So in case things change, terms of these whole buildings.
It 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 is a small, it's a small savings, I think the percentage savings is about seven and a half percent. Um, and and that's just basically due to the fact that there is no investment. Um, you definitely would save more if you put solar panels on your roof or on your property, but that requires a lot bigger investment, um, money, money, money upfront, as well as real estate um to put the panels on, um, so there, this is a definitely a lot easier way to um have had a little bit of savings as as well as the environmental impact. If there's no questions on that, uh, I'll move on. Uh, so as far as the financials, there are some system-generated printouts in the in the packet. Uh, unfortunately, due to the timing of the meeting and being so early in the month, I do, I have not completed closing the year. Um, so I, that will have to wait to later in the month. Um, I definitely, I'll include stuff in the next meetings packet in September, but if I have something before, then I could also send out an email to the board with a report showing where we ended the year, so you have that information as soon as possible. Any other questions? Uh, no, uh, and then as far as the budget timeline, I'm just gonna, um, I recommend that we just table that to the to the, I think it's on their new business, under the budget discussion.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, this is the first time I'm I'm doing the budget thing, I'm just curious if there's uh this year uh surplus, or if we're in the hole, I don't know. If you have that idea yet, it's since you haven't finished the year, but.
We are expecting a surplus, uh, so I don't anticipate that to change, it's just the amount of the surplus that I don't have at this time.
Got it.
Yeah, we can just move on uh to uh the budget discussion, to go back to personnel.
Okay, so you want to do that budget now?
Oh, you didn't talk about the timeline, sorry about that.
We can do it separately.
Okay, yeah, we, yeah, we can go ahead and just do that now while you're here. And uh the timeline is the budget.
Okay, uh, so the timeline was in the packet, um, so that's the timeline. Uh, was somebody saying? Okay, um, so the the timeline, it has two, two columns, one for the SU budget, which we'll go over at more detail in the August SU meeting. Um, and then there's the district budget, which will be on the right-hand side. Uh, we have moved the budget process up this year, um, hopefully to give us more time to do really some more thorough planning, um, looking, taking a deeper dive into some of the the um things that we know will be uh major issues this budget season, uh, due to many different reasons, um, which we'll go over uh a few of them in in a few moments, uh, and then more as we progress with the budget cycle. Um, so we're looking at, uh, tonight, we're just going to toss high level, uh, and then uh we usually, in the past, we've presented a first draft of the budget in November, uh, and that gives us November, December, and January to review and approve and finalize the budget. Uh, this year, we're hoping to get a a first draft in front of you, no later than October. Um, uh, with, again, with Wells meeting so early, I don't think I'll have it ready for the September meeting. Um, so you should have that definitely by the October meeting, where we'll be looking at a first draft, it'll give us at least an extra month um to to make decisions and and re- research items, so that we ha- have more time to discuss. Um, and and during the September meeting, I I would imagine that we'll have more discussions without any hard details in front of us um to to look at an actual first draft, but we can start, start the discussions on the things that we know uh will need to be researched, um, and that we will be looking for decisions by the board on. Uh, so here we are, like I said, we're in August, we're talking about the timeline. Um, in a few minutes after we go through the timeline, we're going to go over some bullet points. Uh, in September, we'll continue those discussions, we'll bring the uh the administrators into the discussion to really start looking at uh details regarding their buildings, um, staffing, concerns, uh, needs that they have in their buildings. Uh, October, we'll look at a a first draft of the budget, which will be the papers in front of you. Um, we'll be able to see what the expenses look like, we'll be able to see most of the revenues, um, and really make some uh decisions on where we want to go with the budget. Uh, November, uh, we'll we'll be getting more information from the state, uh, we'll look at a second draft. Uh, and then uh December, we would be looking at third draft and potentially approving the budget. Uh, Wells is, Wells is, depending on the year, sometimes they've approved it in December, sometimes they've approved it in January. Um, if if timing allows, and we feel like we're in a good place. Um, I I think approving it in December has a lot of benefits, um, it gives us more time to prepare for the town town meeting, um, the brochures, uh, the the town report. Uh, leaving that until January really makes the whole process a rush. Um, we don't have a lot of the state information usually by um the beginning of December, uh, but uh, the state information really should be guiding our decisions, they should just be factors that are playing into our tax rate. Um, I mean, we should be doing our best to put together a budget that's that's best for our students, but yet being reasonable for taxpayers, um, and and those other fact, those other factors that are outside our control, um, we so, we so, we know those will affect our tax rate, but we shouldn't be letting those make our our complete decision. Um, if if for some reason we can't approve it in Ja- in December, we do have the the beginning of January to do that, uh, and then still have, so we should still have sufficient time to get that stuff together. It it's just um not ideal with the with the timing. Uh, and then Ja- um, February, we'll we'll discuss uh uh preparing, marketing, um, preparing for town meeting, marketing the budget, um, brochures, uh, stuff like that, and and then March, uh, February, the end of February is our town meeting day, and then March would be voting day. Any questions on the timeline before we get into further discussions? Okay. Uh, so we've we've already talked a little bit about the reason for moving it, moving it uh earlier this year, um, but we're we're doing that with all districts, we feel that there's many items that really we need to, we need to dive deeper into that have been affecting us over the last few years, that we've kind of just um, kind of skated along, but we, they really need resolution. Um, and and some of those, some of those things we'll get into deeper in executive sessions, um, in in future meetings. Uh, but we feel like we needed more time to really have longer discussions, engage the board, um, get board feedback, and and have time for the board to ask questions and and for us to go back and have conversations with the administrators and bring back the information so that we can make uh uh good decisions on the the future of the budgets and the future of the school district. Uh, Chris, do you want to speak next about staffing?
Sure. Lewis, I put together this is just bullet points for us to kind of think about. Something we really start that dive a little deeper, that does. Uh, we all know, know well, we're Act forty-six, we want the promise of Act forty-six. Uh, restrictions for a lot of community members, we've seen over years, and I've not seen that saving. But I think as we look at budgeting, one of the things that, you know, Lewis and I talked about, we'll Rick and Carol as well, to really start to look at our enrollment, our staffing ratios, you know, uh, with our class sizes, and just uh, you know, have have some discussion around that, that's okay. Because they're made, but uh we really should be doing each year just that, you know, having projections and role projections in each of our buildings, and just looking at what the, what our needs really are and what they are. In the past, I practice has been just, you know, add, we'll add, we'll add. I think we have to look at, you know, moving forward, uh, if there's an add, we'll look at, what is it values? Just whatever, whatever, our goals, whatever it needs, and if so, then we may have to look at, well, you know, what what goes off the board then as a result of that, that add. Uh, you know, staffing is approximately eighty percent of our budgets. Uh, and so, you know, and you know, there's, there's not a lot of real room, but we can also look at how to better, you know, share resources across two buildings. Uh, there's also been discussions, you know, from an SU standpoint, about uh start to share resource across the SU, so it's not just uh dependent on uh just build our wells, that if there's a program being offered, say, a Rotten Town, or say, West Rotten, how do we provide access for our students here to to that program? Uh, so we, you know, there's some things we need to start thinking about, uh, as part of the promise around Act forty-six. Uh, another key part of this, we discussed already, is about local asset positions. Uh, this is one of the discussions we're having with all boards, we know that ESR funds aren't going to go away, will not be renewed, uh, but the concern that we have is uh when these, you know, these funds go away, what should we do with these positions? And I think what we uh need to start doing as a as a board, uh, you know, Rick, Carol, myself will talk about building out, see plans, and what we need to make, start to what this is about, what I'm going to keep that position or build up capacity uh to absorb uh the lost that position, so um if we feel that in, you know, three years' time, excuse me, interventionist is highly critical, and we're going to look at, well, what, at what cost? That does, so that's the session we need to add, because uh we do know that with with way budgets have been, that our budget nearly passed uh this past year, and I think we just have to, we'll really be fiscally responsible to uh providing high-quality education for our kids, but without breaking the bank. And how can we do that, you know, just it's a bit of a, a mind shift, and that's a privilege, you said, Rick, Carol, myself, and and Lewis, we do a lot of, I think, over the next couple weeks, uh, prior to September, October, just around what the scenario may look like. So we have some information for the board as well. Um, Lewis, you want to go on staff wages, and I'll tell them next.
You're muted, Lewis.
Thank you, uh, so this year, we, it was a big year for 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 staff wages, we settled two, two major contracts. Uh, so we settled the teacher contract for a four-year agreement, which included uh this current year and and three future years. Uh, and then we settled the ESP wages, which are our power educators, custodians, and um administrative assistants, and and that was for three years, it was this year and two, the next two years. And and those settlements um were not in line with what we have budgeted, and and we we know this is an employees market out there, and in order to retain um valuable employees and to remain competitive in the job market and be able to have new hires, uh, we needed to be as aggressive as we could with with negotiations. Um, and and that's going to result in some increases in our budget, which we'll need to take a closer look at as we look at the the first draft and what those impacts will be. Um, our FY twenty-three budget was approved last last year, um, prior to the settlement of these agreements, so the set, the these settlements were not accounted for uh completely in our in our budget. Um, we're accounting for that next year with the use of some ESR funds, which we've discussed at both the Wells brings and the SU meeting, uh, but looking at FY twenty-four, we'll still have that impact for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three that that's compounded. Um, so those are, those are just topics that that will be part of the budget discussions and things that we'll have to account for, and and either determine whether um that could be sustainable um with our current budget and and go into, flow into the tax rate, or whether we're going to need to account for that and and look for savings somewhere else in the budget. Um, so so I mentioned two of our major groups, it's our teachers and our ESP. Uh, the one group we real, which we really haven't focused on in the last few years for staffing, is looking at our non-unions. And this is something SU-wide that we, we want to really to to take a closer look at our non-union positions to make sure that we're remaining competitive with those positions as well. Uh, again, to to be able to retain our valuable employees and to be able to be competitive with hiring uh for those open positions. Um, i- it seems every time we have a a new position opening up and we go to hire, I mean, the market is just moving so fast uh these days, and you look at just, you look at the who's hiring out in the market, and um, just these fast, fast food joints paying sixty and eighteen dollars an hour, and we just, um, and and that's starting salary, so we we just, in order, if we want to keep employees and um be able to to find new employees, we just need to make sure that we're staying with the times and and remain competitive in the job market. Um, so that, I think that's going to be a big focus uh of of this year's budget, is both accounting for those settlements and 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 going forward for non- for non-union. Um, a- as Chris mentioned, staffing is eighty percent of our Wells and Middletown school budgets, uh, if you take out the tuition piece for the secondary students. Um, so staffing and benefits could have a huge impact. Uh, we don't know what health insurance is going to look like. We don't know what health insurance is going to look like, but we, we know it's had double-digit increases for the last three years. I would anticipate no change for this year. Again, being, I would be conservative at this point until we have further information and look at another double-digit increase. I don't think the situation in the market has changed significantly, especially with inflation that would warrant us decreasing those estimates. So that, that's it for, for staffing at this time. The next topic I was going to talk about is food service. So the legislators did approve free meals for all students again for next year. The program's going to work a little bit differently than it has in the past. The last couple of years, it's been federally funded. So we've been working under either, one, the last year was called the Seamless Summers, which was a federal program. And so we got, we got full reimbursement for all students under that program. This year, we're moving to what's a program that the state has called Provision Two, which is, is a program that schools can go into in, in normal years without legislative action. If you have five, high free and reduce numbers. Our numbers, free and reduced or direct certified numbers don't warrant us being in that program in a normal year. So that's why we haven't done it. But under this program, all students will be able to eat free and the state will be paying for those students that aren't normally covered on the free and reduce through the state education fund. That is being paid for with prior year surplus for next year. But looking into future years, it's, it's unknown as to what the state's going to do. There has been talk about extending that, but the funding isn't there at this time. So the question will become, does that burden then get pushed on to the local budgets? And something that we'll need to account for in next year's budget. We don't know at this time. I don't know that we'll know by the time we finalize budgets. Since the legislators don't really start meeting until the early winter. But it, it's something that I think we should keep in the back of our mind when we're talking about budgets and food service. And then the next item is, so this year, we will be going out to bid for our food service management company. This isn't something that typically impacts Wells Springs because they, they don't participate. They run their own in-house program. But I, I did want to talk about this further with the board to see if there's any, been any, or see if there's any interest in participating in that bid. And there's, there's a few, there's a few main reasons, but the big one is cost. So when you look at costs, Wells Springs subsidized their food service program to a cost of approximately $80,000 a year. The Corey Valley and Rutland Town just ended last year with a surplus in their food service of $150,000. So that, that's a huge swing financially. And, and so the board, I know the board has always valued running an in-house program and having a higher quality meal and purchasing higher quality foods. And that has been a value of the board and that does come at a cost. And if the board still would like to go that, down that direction, that's fine. But I just thought, since we're going out to bid, that we at least bring that to the board to see if there's any interest in us changing for the future years. And I'm not looking for, for any answers on that, just possible discussion to, either tonight or future, at future meetings.
I have two more items that Louis wrap up. So I know we talked about the local ESSR positions. Another item that we need to think about is just the summer programming. Rick and Carol have done a nice job by summer programming for our students this year. I think if we look at a lot of the, the program, the ESSR funds. So I think what we just have to consider is the cost. So once the ESSR funds go away, those funds will look at hitting our local budgets. And, you know, we talked with other boards about this as well, about developing a transition plan or what that, if, you know, we still want to provide some sort of, excuse me, summer program, the cost and how we, we can absorb that and what that may look like. But that is not a important discussion because I think it's, it definitely needs, you know, in our communities. I think, you know, the parents have been great for that. But there is a cost that we will incur once the ESSR fund go away until our local budget. So it's just something, just something for us to consider. And the last thing is around facilities planning. I know that I'd like to work with Rick, Carol and facilities committee and open a three to five-year plan to present it forward just around facilities and so we can look at, you know, total costs and so we can begin budgeting at that time as well. I think that we are, you know, as with all the SU, there's, you know, schools that are in need of repair. And there are things that, you know, there's a reactive approach and there's a proactive approach. I think with Scott and facilities, the two building administrators, they really build now a three-to-five-year plan for, can really understand what the needs are for the B pro, you know, schools, whether it be painting to large scale, whether like, you know, replacing a roof or, you know, outside the Scott or the bell tower at Wells Springs. I do think it's worth us to take that into consideration too, you know, cost that we're looking at for the next five years as well. Louis, you know, wrap it up.
Yeah, so I know we talked about a lot tonight. And, and so I think after, after I wrap it up, I, I think what we're really looking for tonight is just to have, just the high-level discussions, answer any questions that you may have about the process. And then any things that you want us to go back and bring you back to more information or research. And then I think at the future meetings, we'll have, go, really go into details, whether it be an open session or if it's, if it's contract related in executive session.
Louis, I, Louis, I did have one more item, I'm sorry. So about PCB, we have PCB tests. And I know that many of you should have seen that Middletown and Wells have been pushed back. We have, Middletown is the window of October 30th, October 1st to December 31st of 2024. And then Wells actually follows in the, the summer, July 1st, July 31st of 2025. So that has been delayed. So, you know, that's when we test the results, but that is something we should be considering as well. I think one of the nice things about having this process delayed for two schools is give the legislator a better understanding of how they're going to tackle some of the issues, some of the problems that they're going to encounter in some of our, our schools and look at funding resources and what they may look like. So we can kind of read the tea leaves a little bit as we go through the next couple of years and see what's going on, that will allow us to do some planning as well. So, so thank you.
Okay. So we know all the decisions that we make affect their tax rate and being sensitive to the communities and their taxpayers. What, what I would be looking for you for, for, from tonight is some discussion on where you want to see the budget as far as percentage-wise. We, we know in the past few years, we've been really close to that excess spending threshold and, and looking to avoid hitting that for this budget season or even future budgets. Once we exceed that threshold, there are tax penalties on any spending that goes over that threshold. So that's, that's never anything that we want to do. So looking for some feedback so that when we're designing the budget, we know really what we're targeting as far as either dollar values or percentages for that first draft. Fund balances, we will play into the, the budget as well. That'll be the surplus that we'll look at at the next meeting. And at that meeting, future meetings, we can discuss how we want to handle that surplus. And really the options are giving it back to the taxpayers as a revenue, which will offset our education spending. Or what we have done in the past is create reserve funds, whether it be for capital maintenance or other priorities that we may have for the district. To really put some away for, for rainy day funds in the, whether it be building, building roofs or painting or, or something like that. And now, if, if that's the direction that the board would want to go on, we'd have to put that on the ballot in March. So, so I think at the high level, that's really all we have to present tonight. Just really looking to get the board now to have a discussion on some of those items, ask any questions and, and provide feedback as to where you want the budget to go.
ESSR funded positions. Do we have?
So if you want, Eric, we could both, September meeting, we could have all these, this information. The thing we just talked about will have a more detailed report for you around ESSR positions, the total cost of summer programming, ESSR funds, so we can better understand what that is.
Okay, yeah, you know, there's a lot guys talking about here. And so I guess, well, my next question is, I maybe, that would, that would be the same thing, right?
So I mean, our, our goal type, I know we, there are a lot of things to think about that was due to be in September. I don't know, Louis, myself, Rick and Carol would work together for, for the board. You know, we kind of outlined some of these things, you know, total costs, the impacts of. So you didn't really kind of see the ESSR, if there's, say, $60,000 worth of summer programming and don't cover that. But what would that look like, you know, when it hits the local budget? And so what, you know, so what are we getting with those ESSR funds? And so you kind of see a comparison, start having some decisions around that.
Is, is the summer program totally ESSR funded or?
We, we are, but it was total more.
Each school has a local budget of $3,500 for summer programming. And, and then in the past, that's covered just your normal summer program, which has been, been limited in both hours and days. Those current programs have been 100% ESSR funded, with the exception of the preschool program this year. Last year's program was 100% funded. This program, this year, the K6 program is 100% funded and the pre-K is being, it's a combination of local funded and parent-paid funding.
And we, we do know that the last year, Senator Sanders had met with all his candidates. This was part of this big push, providing summer programming for schools. And the concern was around the funds. He said, so we will get these things up and running and then the funds go away. Then, then what happened? He said, you know, part of, he said, well, we'll look at, you know, if there are B10 funds. So we, we don't know. So we have to operate under, what we do know that is ESSR funds aren't going to go away. So I don't know if, you know, later on, that there might be some state or other money that might come back throughout summer programming. That is a concern because of the fact you're looking at infrastructure. There are, you know, just a lot of our communities don't have resources around summer programming, you know. So I know as a parent, there aren't a lot of day camp options. There's just a lot of things to do. So just it's, there is a reliance on the schools to provide during the summer, but there's a cost to that too.
We've been very fortunate to have much bigger program, thankfully for ESSR funds. But obviously to sustain that, that's the question.
And we could start talking about, I can imagine for a while today, we were talking about summer program and how it would be to look different, funds going away.
So that's why, that's separate.
It's separate.
All right. In regards to the food service, is it possible to see like a comparison? I guess, would we have, I guess, two separate food programs that we're doing in-house? Right?
So right now, we have, each, each school is running their own program. It's, it's combined into one food service account. But they, they are both handling their own purchasing and they're, they're running their own programs as far as menus and stuff like that. If, if we were to be part of the, the rest of the SU, there would be one food service director for the SU and they would manage the program, set menus, do all the ordering. And you would be following in line with all the other schools.
Okay. I just think in terms, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna look in and maybe make a change. I think it'd be good to see like a comparison between what, and I'm not, I know that food that's provided here in-house, much better than what I initially know than, you know. That to me has always been appealing, but I don't, I don't know. And I mean, this, you know, I mean, I don't know exactly what's to be, I see the menu, you know, that goes home, goes out. You know, I don't know if that's all, you know, cooked in the building or prepackaged, you know. I think it'd be good, just people are going to look at food service to look at it in a little bit more detail. As just to say, get a bid from a food service place. That's Aladdin, right?
So Aladdin is our current, current vendor. The bid process for food service is, is very intensive. It, it'll take several months. There is three main players in the state. It's Aladdin Cafe Services and then the Abbey Group. So they would, they would be the three main vendors that would provide bids. We've had Aladdin who, they've changed names several times since we've been with them. But we've had them in, at least in Pontonley's where, where I've been since I started for the last 15 years.
Out of curiosity, what kind of costing that would be?
I mean, I couldn't tell you exactly. I mean, a lot of it is economies of scale and that, that's one of the reasons why your program costs as much as it does. So it's, I mean, in order to, to staff your program, you may not make enough meals in your buildings to cover the cost when, when you look at reimbursement rates and paid rates. But one of the benefits to being part of the consortium of the SU is that you get better discounts on, on your food. This is a national buying group that would be doing the purchasing. This, the staffing, staffing costs are cheaper. So that's one of the reasons why they're, they're not paying as much. They're, they're not, they're not union employees and they're not, so they're not, they're not paying the same rates that, that we are. And the third, the third thing would be that all of the revenues and expenses are lumped into one account. And i- if we're running a surplus overall in the account, we're not doing any sort of assessment based on how much you generated versus Pontonley Elementary generated or Rutland Town generated. So if there's an overall surplus, then that gets enjoyed and benefited by all schools that are part of the consortium. So if, if your program was running a deficit and they were running a, a surplus, they would offset each other to some extent, to, to the extent that there's a surplus in the account.
How would the, how would the potential of an outside contractor mesh up with the current grant programming? What have you of, I want to call it farm to table, but Rick would know the name of it, of like the local buying thing.
It would be similar to any other grant that we have. So we, we have the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant in, in many of our schools in the SU. And so that is managed by our food service director, Kim Babcock. And so she does the ordering. She works with the administrators to see how they want to run the program. So if this was another grant that you have, the farm-to-school one, she would work with the administrators on what the specifics of that program are. And if it requires local ordering or whatever it requires, then she would work with the administrators to make sure that those, those specifications are met.
Is it too early to ask about how people waiting to stand up for that budget?
I can't give you any specifics because we have not gotten new information from the state. I can tell you that the data that we received from the state prior to the bill being approved. So the, the bill did go through some adjustments during the process, the legislative process. I don't know that they were significant changes, but there were changes that were made. Based on the data that was provided, it was going to, before those adjustments were made, Wells Springs and Corey Valley were going to see a positive adjustment to the tax rate. Positive meaning that it was going, it would lower taxes, so increase equalized pupils for both Wells. Uh for both Wells Springs and Corey Valley, Rutland Town and Ira going to see uh a negative impact, um so it would increase taxes. Um Ira was sort of uh a very small change, uh less than one percent. Uh Rutland Town was pretty significant, uh Wells Springs, I don't remember the exact percentage off the top of my head, but I definitely can bring back more data next month. Uh but it it was several percentages in Wells Springs favor.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Lewis? Kara, you're muted for talking to us. Still muted.
I'm unmuted, I don't know why.
So thoughts on? First draft and percentages?
I guess I would say. You know, typically, you you always start off or at least look at like a level funded budget. Do you know uh if if we were to start with that, if how close that would put us? Where would we be with like the excess spending threshold?
So when you say level funded, uh that could be interpreted two ways, so do you mean level funded as in bring back everything we have now? With all the inflationary costs that we know of, such as increases in wages, increase in benefits. And just keep everything's status quo, or when you say level funded, do you mean bring it back at a zero dollar, zero percentage increase?
But first, it won't be. That's, yeah, I'm just talking about in the past, right? I think this this budget process is gonna look different and I firstly, I don't see. You know, percentage wise, where would be a good place to start?
So I I mean, we could, I know in the past, we've done differently depending on the board and I I know in the many times in the past, we just bring back. Uh the budget being the first option, level funded, where we bring back everything that we have now. Uh accounting for inflationary costs, estimates on tuitions and all that stuff. And and see where, see where that falls and then the budget can make decisions from there. I I do anticipate that based on, uh I know. Some of the factors that are going on with inflation, um both for benefits and wages as well as other items that are out there contracted services. Um I I think we're going to be i- if not exceeding it, pretty close to that that spending threshold. Um the other factor that plays into it is your equalized pupils, which we won't have in in the last few years, we haven't had that number until January. So I I definitely, we can bring that back to see where we are and then we can make decisions from there. But i- if the board is thinking that um that we're to stay under that threshold, which would be my recommendation. And and if that's going to re- if that is going to require finding savings, whether that be through uh RIFs or other cutting measures. Um it'd be best to know that as soon as possible, so that we have more time to work with administrators. On on finding which one, which cuts we can make with minimal impact to students.
That's kind of what I was getting at, by the way, that that excess spending threshold. Over the uh, do you know, I'm talking ahead, what the penalty is for surpassing that?
Uh so I've never had, uh in my thirteen years, we've never exceeded it, so I've never had to really deal with it. Uh but I believe for every dollar that your your tax double, for every dollar that exceeds that spending threshold. But I definitely can bring more information on that at the next meeting.
I think that would be helpful and that's kind of what I was getting at, wherever we start, the budget thing. My thought is just keeping under that. Too much as possible and that's probably essentially. Really digging deep into the budget, trying to find those.
So I think Carol, Lewis and I, Chris, uh really want to. And I I understand, I can understand that.
I mean, Eric's point, you know, we exceed the the threshold, that's not very sound.
No, I I I'm getting it, um.
I mean, all all the things that have been mentioned and I I don't think any any cuts are easy. Um in the effort to not go over the threshold. Looking at summer programming and food service savings.
Well, summer program, summer programming is not currently in the budget, so it's not really a cut you can make. Um we've been offering larger programs than we have in the past with grant funding, so even cutting, cutting summer programming does not. Result really in budget savings. Um and and I know we've been talking about a lot of um. We've been talking about the excess setting threshold, but I have, we haven't really gone over what that is and and what our current spending is, so I thought I'd just provide that, so last year our. Spending per pupil was nineteen thousand one hundred and eleven dollars per pupil. The excess spending threshold last year was nineteen thousand nine ninety seven, so we were about nine hundred dollars shy of that threshold. Based on the, based on the number of pupils we have, I mean, we couldn't, we would have to increase our spending um. Significantly to 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 exceed that threshold. Um but based on the inflationary factors that I think are coming into play next year. Um I I think we're going to see a big jump.
What are our student numbers like?
Our equalized pupils last year was two sixty. That includes second, that includes secondary.
I I think we're gonna be about to say that it kind of depends right now on these two factors, so. Okay, so I I I think if we look at just low funded or I think. In my experience where then it's up to myself, Lewis, Rick and Carol to really look at. How we're gonna get there, you know, what cuts and present that to the board to take a look at, see what that that looks like, uh but I think it's actually. And that's the reality, that's what we have to do, we have to take the level funded, we take the level funded and it really does, it's an exercise where you go. Line by line, program by program, person by person, you really look at, you know, efficiencies and. And you get there, it's just, you know, like, that's that's something we have to do. So and without compromising, you know, quality of education for our kids, yeah, that's that. That's something we have to do, but like I said, it's a. I'm used to that, I think that that's inclusive, we're conservative in that approach, definitely want to. Understand, make sure that we are not just throwing good money after bad.
So that was the second level funded option.
It gives us an idea about what that would look like, and I think that's something, I think, you know, gives a more discussion, I think it's important for. For to see is if there are reductions, you know, cuts. We may, what what those are, I think it also allows to, we're gonna talk about values and priorities, lots, you know. What we really want, so we might find that's, you know, if we're prioritizing student learning, there might be some things, we may find that we have. Two or three different, you know, uh reading programs that we're looking through, you know, one of the districts. We have excessive amount of reading programs, we don't need all these reading programs, so how can we shift away from this, it really looks consolidated that. You know, find, you know, sixty seventy thousand dollars right there, so there there are. Ways of looking through this, so it's just, I know the first thing you can think about is cutting staff, that's the last thing we we touch. And so it really is, you look at, you know, a lot of those items, and I know that. Um food service is a natural, actually, I think that, you know, the city community will have a. You know, opinion about that too, and make, you know, quality of food and, but if that's something which the community values and really wants to keep in, then we. Look at, okay, so with that in mind, that that what else goes, I think there, that's part of that exchange, I I think we, you know, we. Our goal is to be consistently responsible, present a budget to the. To the board, to the community that is, shows their responsibility without compromising student learning, and high quality education, I think it can't be done. So it's gonna take a little work, well, you know, so three of us and Lewis, but. That's that's okay, it's a good exercise.
Anyone else?
A good, a good baseline, I think that that's a good plan.
All right, does that kind of give you a starting point, Lewis?
Yes, it gives us enough to work with at this time.
Can you hear me now? So just wondering, because one of the things you mentioned was how do we address the surplus and if we're not gonna give it back to the taxpayers in some way. We have to put it on the budget or on the ballot, right? Did I understand that correctly? So um will we have the three to five year facilities plan? By the time we start the budget surplus conversation, because I feel like, at least in my mind. Those are our big ticket expenses coming up that a surplus could really be beneficial for, but I wanna. Know what the plan is before we start looking at what we want to do with the surplus.
Yes, I I think we should have the three to five year plan um um a- as part of the budget discussion, so that we can make decisions on. How much we need to have in a reserve fund, uh we did put, right now Wells Springs is sitting with thirty five thousand dollars in their reserve fund uh for capital maintenance. Um a- and you were correct, the the two options are to give it back as a revenue and and offset our spending or put it into that reserve fund. Um when you have a surplus, I mean, it's always, it's kind of a balancing game, because you don't want to have too much surplus and give that back to the taxpayers. Because then if you don't have a similar uh surplus the following year, then you're automatically starting with a decrease in revenue. Uh and that could really hurt y- your budget cycle, um so it uh it's always good if you have an abnormal large surplus in one year. Is to try to put that into a reserve fund, so that you can keep that revenue stable over the course of 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 over time. And and not have those peaks and dips in in your revenues, because you're giving back a big chunk. One year and and then you have nothing the next year. I I think once we know what that surplus is, we can start having better discussions on. Uh how much we we think would be a good number to put into the budget versus put on the ballot.
All right. All set? All right, thank you, Lewis. All right, so we'll uh just move back up to uh contract recommendations. We have two contract recommendations tonight. Carol Cutter. For music. And Mary Ellen Jacobs, uh school nurse.
So I'd like to welcome, uh Carol's here tonight, uh. Pleasure to have her here tonight.
Is there a big motion to the contracts? Recommendations?
I'll make the motion to accept them as presented.
Need discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor? All right, we're excited to work with you, so uh. Thank you for joining the team.
Thank you. Welcome, and I'm excited that we got an actual nurse. Yay, not that you aren't also fabulous, Carol, I'm sure, but.
All right, uh so we're gonna go back down, I added on the agenda, request from the Wells Village Select Board. Um I have received an email. Um that uh basically, the Select Board has been trying to. Improve or reduce the sign, the speed sign on Route thirty in the town of Wells. So uh I was asked, uh basically, they are looking for. A letter of support. To basically, I guess, uh. Approach the state with additional signage and safety ma- measures, village. Uh because the speed limit's thirty five miles an hour. Uh I I ended up talking um with Mr. Cruz. Uh just to find out some more information, I told him I'd bring it to the board, um which is basically what his request is. So um. Uh having said that, any any questions, or or number of discussion?
Yeah, what are like rock speed, was he looking from where to where, has there ever been an issue?
Um he said that over the last few months, we've been multiple accidents right here. Uh and said that he's also reached out to other businesses and. You know, right along Route thirty for basically the same support. Uh from what he said, because it's a a state highway, they're responsible. Uh state's responsible for it, not the town, so uh. From my understanding, it's um the village not put up sign of their own. So um.
So we can sort of occur for current children, I.
I I don't know.
The school has to look at. Uh if not a better turn or what are happening with children?
Isn't there supposed to be a reduced speed in the school zone? I'm like, well, it's about power. School isn't session. So you know, there should be, that's the stage you need as a main uh school.
You know, we don't have one either.
No, we have a crosswalk.
But there's no.
Middle town is set back from the road though. Because middle town is set back from the road, we wouldn't be a school zone, but. Because and because the front entrance of Bell School is on the little easement, like. Part of that, maybe that's why they haven't does, it's worth this letter of support requesting to be. Set up as a, the worst the state is gonna say is no, we're not gonna put up extra signage, best case scenario. We get additional safety signage for kids. I I don't see a downside to saying yes, keep our kids safe.
I think. You know, my first thought was the schools, you know, um but I would say that. He's looking for support. Primarily just for this reduction in speed and I think it might. Primarily just for this reduction in speed, and I think it might, you know. You know, basically just be for the, the, the part of the highway that's here, but overall, he's looking for. A complete reduction of speed throughout the whole college, so, and, and I know, uh, but. You know, overall, it is, um. It is, uh, it's a tricky area, because. You know, how are we responsible for that?
I look like the military specifics, where does he want to start? Does he want to start way up high, I, I, that's what I mean, I want more specifics and actual.
I mean, are, like, it doesn't, and doesn't necessarily matter what the town manager, or whoever this guy is, wants. The Agency of Transportation will come out and do a safety assessment. Of it, and they will make a decision about what signage they put up, or if they reduce speed, and they'll look at accident reports, I imagine. I mean, and. So, I mean, we can request a safety assessment.
Yeah, I think overall, uh, these, uh. They're looking to do some sort of, uh, you know, just collection of support, that they're gonna submit to the state.
What's wrong?
Yeah.
Or, just about the time, just about the speed, you don't go from where to where. I mean, if you want to go up to way down up there, way all over there, I mean, that's ridiculous. Like, insert everything I can say, but I don't want to go on a supportive, supportive.
Right, no, I get what you're saying, yeah, it's fair, uh, you know, my thought on the whole situation is, uh. Is there, there, there's no harm in supporting, you know, a reduction of speed. Whether in town, or immediately around the school. You know, that's just my thought on this whole situation, and. And I almost quoted, we said, you know, I'm not looking for a paragraph or a page. Whatever, you know, board decides, um. You know, to support, you know, just having, uh, I think that's all he's looking for, just a support. For just, uh, additional signage and safety measures, and, um, I think that's as far as it should go. Does it support it or not? Uh, and, I, I, I don't really like, you know, adding these type of things on the agenda, but it's. Uh, we're looking, and I just found out about this like two days ago, I was just having fun. So, that's why I brought it up, uh, uh, so, you know, I'd like to hear from, uh, everyone else. On this.
Eric, we asked this individual to our September four meeting, so, Sue, I know, to ask this. Question personally.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, um, you know, if, if everyone would like to hear more information, you know, we can definitely bring this back. Uh, but, I, I wouldn't have brought it tonight, if you didn't say that they were looking to do something tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah.
There's something wrong.
Yeah, what is it, how you're going to do tomorrow?
Basically, I think he's, uh, working on, uh. Just, I guess, a list, a list of supporters who would like to see in the town, uh, for safety and additional signage. I think that's what I'm doubting.
Well, I, I agree with Sue, without knowing exactly what they're looking for as far as group thirty changing. How, how far they're gonna make this reduced speed zone, I think we would definitely make a statement, we're for. Reduce speed near in the front of the school, and safety for the kids.
That's exact, I.
If it's just in our little section, but I don't want to see it the whole.
We should have a school speed zone, that, that's really bad for the rest.
But then again, have, I do not ever recall the only issue with students, like. Traffic, there's full hours, I never, I've kind of lived here, in, in some years. Have we ever just issued, happened to watch, we've had accidents here, but they've been after hours, they've been in areas where it's. Basically, at the Wells Brook Store, people backing out, and stuff like that, those things, but you never would have seen.
It only takes one incident for solid data.
We, but then again, like, now this, can't go by a one.
If, if we qualify, I'd like to see school, you know, schools on the side.
Yeah, I, I find that it's actually really, Darrell, like, don't have a school.
Right, that's why I don't think we should just give them a blank and support.
I, I don't see.
I think the answer is writing our own letter, which might be, you know, copied in his packet. But it, requesting a safety assessment and consideration of implementing a school zone. In the immediate vicinity of Wells Springs, because anything beyond a hundred yards away from the school in either direction is outside of our. Jurisdiction, literally and figuratively. But I think, you know, requesting a safety assessment and implementation of a school zone is definitely a start. That we do have, kind of.
This, a, a safety assessment, is that more appropriate for a town municipality?
I mean, uh, maybe it's not a safety assessment, I, like, that's just the, a l- language that. You know, is common in state government, or we could request that they evaluate the. Root, that section of Route Thirty for implement, implementation of a school zone, so use the word evaluation, assess. Whatever, you know, look at it and tell us if you'll agree to put in a school zone signage. Because I think that's a fair request, which falls within our domain of control and, or not control, but oversight. And could, you know, won't harm the efforts of the, the town, and potentially could benefit them. As well, like, if one section is down to twenty-five, and potentially has some sheriff enforcement behind it. That might slow down things half a mile in e- either direction, without anything else from the town. But we can't control what happens outside of.
So, I guess that emphasis would be, uh, uh. You know, support for just greater routes.
I, I, I don't think we can support the whole program that you're doing, because you don't know the extent. But that would be good to know for the next meeting. What, what, what has the applied for, what has Wells Village done? But, the only thing I think we could do is just say, yeah, we would like to see. Reduction or, or safety devices put up on the room, by the school. Whatever the state. You could support that, I think.
Okay, uh.
I guess my next question is logistics, is, Eric, is that something that you would draft, that, would it come from the board as a whole? Would it come from, like, who writes the letter?
Well.
Yeah.
That's, that's, uh, that's gonna be the next discussion, uh. Whether, whether it has to be like, big letter, or just, you know, just a simple. Letter of support, um, or wanna work on together, or something myself, superintendent can work on.
Probably like a two or three sentence.
And it would go to a man named Robert Failey, who's the District Three Transportation Administrator for the Agency of Transportation.
Okay, so. Alright, so you're thinking of, of sending this directly to. Robert Bailey, as opposed to.
I think it could be, our, a copy of our letter could go with the town's appeal for their larger request. But I think if we're going to request this, like, it, it should come directly from us, because our scope is much narrower. Than the larger town request, I mean, I'm, I'm absolutely, you know. I, I have no, I'm, I'm standing on sand with that perspective, if other people want it to go with the towns. I'm fine with it, but I think Meredith's point of, oh my gosh, how have we not already requested this to be a school zone? Struck a chord with me, um, so I think that request should go in, even if we don't end up supporting the town's efforts. But, again, I'm not, I'm not firm in that position.
Okay, alright, no, I didn't.
I just, we have to have attorney waiting for our executive session.
Oh, we do, I did not.
Hey, I'm gonna ask you a charter.
Alright, uh, is he waiting now?
I just told him he's, he's waiting in the room, so I told him to stop, so the charter's for, uh, text him, he is waiting, please.
Okay, well, let's just finish up the, uh, uh, really quick on this, on this request, uh, so. I heard from Cara, um, any other thoughts in regards to how we're gonna draft this letter? Who we're gonna send it to?
I like Cara's idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Alright, I don't need to be supporting any. Like, I, I agree also, we should send it to the county, they've asked us some, you know, it's good, you're good PR to. To cooperate, and we do agree that we're all for more safety, regardless of schedule, highway, but the school. Uh, so, it's reasonable to send it to both.
So basically, the letter should just say something along the lines of, uh. That we would advocate for reduce, uh, additional signage and safety measures, uh. On Route Thirty, so, yeah, on Route Thirty, um. I guess, about the vicinity of the school.
I don't think, necessarily think it needs it, but is it worthwhile to ask that they. Assess the safety of Middletown while we're making the request? Or should we keep it well-specific, because the request was brought up about Wells, and Route Thirty is very different than that section of one thirty-three?
Trying to think, when we put in the sidewalk, this was discussed. Uh, part of the reason we qualified for the safer school was that we were connecting. The sidewalk in town that existed to the school sidewalk. And, so. You think, I think if there were proposals about, uh, some sort of flashing sign there, and, you know, it didn't make the cut. But I kind of feel like. They need to have a crossing guard on that sidewalk.
Well, it's, uh. It's, it's still thirty-five miles per hour, same as in Wells, all the way up to that stop sign. So it couldn't hurt, I, I mean. It, it couldn't hurt to. To, it couldn't hurt, you know, to also include.
I think it's a good.
Uh, Middletown Springs as well, and even if this, this, uh, this letter includes Middletown Springs. Uh, they, you know, we're still advocating for, uh. Signage and safety measures in Wells, it's still got the select board pretty much fine with that, so, uh. Is, is that something everyone's, uh, comfortable with? In terms of including, uh, Middle, Middletown Springs. Uh, in with this letter, and.
It also doesn't state from.
And, uh.
You don't have a sign in school.
It is in the, uh, transportation.
It exists.
It does exist, so.
It's not something to follow up on, you know, you'll fix the.
Uh, so we gotta wrap this up, um. And, uh. And as far as, is everyone okay with, uh, I guess, uh. Uh, self superintendent, right, this.
The thirty-seventies.
Yeah, that way. Alright, well, I think we, I think we should have a motion on, someone's gotta make a motion on.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Throughout the letter, can you, uh. State requires transportation. For the sake of increasing safety on the rural areas. State highways.
Wells Select Board.
Uh, uh, I mean, just to be fair, should, if, if we're gonna include Middletown, should we also copy the Middletown Select Board? Just so that they know? Again, please feel free to tell me no, but if we're copying one board, we should copy both.
That would be the right thing to do.
Doctor, I mean, it wouldn't hurt, I don't know.
I mean, they'll get it, that's a.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Wells Select Board. Apparently has been working on this. That's what I was told, I first heard that, it was. Okay, alright, so we have a motion, uh, all, all those in favor, uh, say hi.
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 No? Okay, any abstentions?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright, motion carried, alright, thank you very much. Uh, good morning, good afternoon, good day, thanks. Alright, uh, so, we can, we can move to this executive session, um, just see what.
I just wanna just do the policies real quick, and I won't go through these, I, I told my textbook, we got them. Probably make some more sense for us to do policies, then we'll go to the second session.
Okay, I don't know, we can do that.
That's alright, I'll just, I'll, yeah. That's okay.
Okay, so, we have, we have, uh, two Wells Spring specific policies. Uh, the school choice, so, it's been, uh, over three years. And, uh, I was looking at these policies. Uh, and the school choice policy, uh, I see. Related to a lot of our other supervisory and district policies, see a lot of issues with this policy. So I actually kind of went through and edited, and all, uh, I can share one, she can read. I will. To show some of these edits. So, when, when I looked at this policy, uh, the first thing that stood out is like frequently asked questions. Uh, it's, I haven't really seen that policy, and it really just. Didn't make sense, because the only part of the policy, uh, that was just the implementation part. And so, I kind of went through, I'll scroll slowly, and, uh. It had, um, it says guidelines. Um, and and again, these are just kind of suggestions, so the, the strikeouts I put in there don't change. Policy, just kind of clarifies it. So instead of having these frequently asked questions, I just struck out the questions. It made each one of those numbers implementation part of policy. Uh, some of the language, uh, is repetitive, um. It's, uh. To me, it just did not really, uh, uh, what we currently have did not just really. Make the policy clear, uh. And so, uh. Also, something else to consider, the application or the application is not part of the policy, but it's. It's there, it can be changed, um. But it says that the board authorizes five seats to enter a next school, but it's not in the policy. So there's. There's work to be done on this policy, so I kind of went through to kind of share. Some. Some potential changes to this policy. Uh. We don't have to make any decisions tonight, but I think, uh, we should discuss it. Yeah.
Just something to think about, I I think. Policy having some flexibility. Try to meet the needs of parents that are coming out, like I know, uh, paperwork's harsh. I think there are times when we're trying to have the benefits of families and students.
So, yeah, you're talking about the application process?
The application, uh. Situations where the best thing for families, students, the change. Probably needs of students.
So you're saying they should be able to apply pretty much anytime? Or is laser in here?
I think flexibility is. I think it's a bigger conversation, but the need, I mean, there is a, some reason there's a. Transition with Middletown Springs, uh, I think we have two great schools. Conversations of, you know, what the needs of the student, yeah. The family, uh. I guess flexibility is one of them. I think it's a bigger conversation.
This, this was, I I believe was meant to mirror the, the school choice policy, the high school. Uh, there's a lot of the same language, but there, what's it mean, exists at Corey Valley, I know that there is a. You know, deadline, application deadline, but I also know that over the course of the year. Uh, I might get a phone call from, say, uh, Brooke also over at Slave Valley. About a student who wants to school choice in for variety of reasons, oh, so. What will they look at, see what if we have a school choice slot in available? Uh, they have one out, so there is a deadline, but we, we do make exceptions. You know, throughout the course of the year, but it really is, those superintendents have to approve. Uh, that's, so I think it's one where. I think, I think, I can't think I wasn't there when I wrote this, but I look at this, it was, I think they just took a lot of it, the language right from the. High school policy, which, that profile makes sense. But, uh, I I do know that each year at Corey Valley by February. I have to present for Corey Valley and have them revisit the numbers, I know that last year they did ten in, ten out, which is schools. But that is fluctuating, so the state requires a secure to. Uh, to adjust those numbers or just to refer them, so it's not just. Set in, uh, perpetuity, so it's just. Is the teacher, we have to make that, uh, public. Publicly known, so.
I remember when we worked on this, so it was kind of what came up was this. Uh, school choice for, uh, deadline. And if I remember correctly, it could kind of pertains. Uh. You know, having classes, um, you know, making sure that they're, you know, they. They had enough room in classes, but, you know, and. I think that's, so. By removing something like that, is that going to? Like.
Well, I I mean, high school is a little different, say, than elementary school, high school, you say, kids get that loaded through the system through a lot of. Single train forces or big local lines, so it's not as interesting, clogged in one cohort, like a third grader. Move right to the third grade cohorts, a freshman or sophomore junior high school could be absorbed into the. Different courses in high school setting, uh, but that that also is ten in, ten out to really look at. You're old, but each year we, we look at what we, you know, could maintain, so, uh, if we feel if there are rolling numbers that's. You know, you don't, we, we allow ourselves, don't have ten outs, we have ten in, but even with those ten in. We're still okay with the staff, and so we do look at staff every year, and that'd just be something which. Maybe this board want to look at is each year we can look at where we're at, and say, do we still want that? The five and five, as you said before, you have that in there, but it seems as if. If we have six or we have sevens, the policy is worded differently.
I also think some families have more than one student that they're gonna lose. Like three overs, so that's not just leaving. Do you know what I'm saying, like, is it, should it be the number of families? It is different. And so you're looking and saying. There are three, there's children of this family, that's three of the five sons. And then, and and it says that siblings can't be part of that. You don't, the one that you're asking. It's.
Family had like a. A second grader or fourth, fifth grader. All of them.
Right, but it's that, that's just, scars.
Well. It should, right, right, but. Well, okay, so. The, the, the school choice form. Which. If, if, in, in terms of flexibility. If we were to remove, uh, a deadline. How would that affect the schools? Because if I remember. I may not remember it correctly, at the time when we were working on this, uh. You know, it, it could greatly affect, uh. Students that live in that district, only those who want to go. Uh, there, so.
Staffing.
So I think that's where the, that, that application, uh. Was left in there for.
Is this a, a, a policy that we could get input for using the community engagement committee structure? Cause I feel like. I mean, if anything's gonna affect both communities, it's gonna be the inter, like, the school choice. Policy, uh, and you know, like, I want families to have flexibility to do what they need to do to get their kids the best education they feel like can. But also. You know, maybe some feedback from Rick and Carol and the teaching staff about the impact of students coming in and leaving. Like, just in the middle of. The year or semester. Like, I I think you're right, there's, there's a lot more work and feedback that we need, need to get.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree, and I think the feedback is good, uh. But we have to also think about, you know, uh. You know, how, how a policy going to affect, uh, the administration and, and the school itself too. Uh. And I think that's. You know, it's well intended to have some of this stuff laid out, that's what I'm asking. Is, oh, we just said, okay, uh, we're just gonna make it flexible, um, how is that going to impact? Uh, the school choice.
So I, 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 my recommendation, I think. The board would need to think about. What the purpose of this policy is first, and I think because that, we talk about flexibility, we have kids. Throughout the calendar year who will move in, who will go, that's the reality of the situation, it's, for a variety of reasons, so, um. That's not a. Much of my current concern, I really think it's more to, for the board, you know. One, I said, I wasn't, wasn't. Wells Board took this place, what was the purpose or the intent behind this? Because, or as mentioned, just be this, this open enrollment. Where kids can just, anytime they move, entertainment, to, to billions, or is it really? Meant back to around very specific. Needs, or, so if there's a, a need for a student to be, uh, whether it be around a, an issue, uh, around, say. Harassment or bullying, uh, that, there is an opportunity for a student to move to another school. Or if there's a, uh, to a program that might be offered one school, staffing, or. Uh, there's a variety of reasons, so I think the board should consider what, what the purpose of this policy is, then kind of work back from there. What, like I said, it's really, I, and that's why I was, when I saw this is, is this open enrollment where we're just, uh, I've opened the boards and under the waters where. Kids move interchangeably, you know, they said the policy itself, there is no real limitation on. What that is. Um, and when I said there's, there's, I said, that's. Word, that's aside, but that if you were to. And limit every script, you say five. But what happens if there was a sixth child, there's issue then, but. State restricts us, like, we can't go above ten at Corey Valley, you don't have state restrictions here, you can feel. That's a child of a six could go and, you know, report to the board and the board can discuss. But I really, I think that, oh, the board really has to look at it, what is the purpose behind this? Policy, uh, in terms of what, what, you know, what it's there for.
I, I mean, is introducing language of like, this is the timeframe and people need to apply to for school choice? Is this any exceptions to this timeframe or policy? Will be managed by the superintendent and the relevant building administrator? Or will be managed, will be considered by, like. Because, like, policy is the black and white, any other administrative rules fall to the superintendent and building administrators, correct?
Would there be procedural grease, car, correct?
Right, so like, the, keep the policy black and white with a line that says. Any exception, you know, apply to the superintendent for. An exception to this policy or however the policy committee would pretty it up.
Oh, I, I think it's important that, um. Because our towns are small, uh. There can be all of a sudden a big shift in one direction, and that's why the limits were put in there, like they were. Think it's important to maintain things, but also to have some overriding. Specific circumstances, which will be challenging.
And, and as I recall in the discussions, this wasn't necessarily for crisis situation. Bullying or something like that, this was like planning for next year, so you wanna switch from Wells to Ripley Town. Or vice versa, and that's why we put it in so it wouldn't be, uh, you know, two just reference, can't change.
And we've done intra-SU transfers, you know, baseball, you know. Students who save, like a Roman Talado, West London, Turgeon, Ravi. Reasons, so, but, but those are special exceptions that we can make within our, to our boards and, uh, with our administrators, so, but. I mean, you don't need a policy, that's, you don't need a policy.
As far, as far as that goes, right. Went in and demanded, you know, if a school with two fifth grade math, you're certain. You really don't think your kids get into this math and you insist change to the other. So policy for that. You might get it done, you might not get it done, but could we handle those emergency situations in the same way? Need a policy.
Uh, Matt, I'll face her.
Yeah, I just, I just had a question of, um. Does, 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 does money follow the student when they transfer? From one school to the other in terms of facilities or, cause I imagine the classrooms are small enough that we could absorb. Students moving.
Standpoint, it's, it's, it's all in the same bucket, there's a Wells Springs budget. That we kind of just really kind of break down for a Middletown or for Wells, but it really is, so it's. It's not really a financial thing, so if you go, say, for Corey Valley to, to here or Wells to Corey Valley, then there'd be a. Uh, you know, Lewis would have to do some accounting just to, you know, so the money would follow, but. Moving from Middletown to Wells would not, uh, but I think that you're right, though, we'd have to take a look at. Implications on staffing, you know, but, uh, and if. There were resources necessary to educate that child, that would need to move with that child. We'd have to look at shifting funding from one school to another to order to make that happen.
Okay, in terms of, in terms of just class sizes, I, I, speaking as not an educator, um. But I don't, I don't see. That it would be, um. I don't know, I don't see it would be, like, I, I agree making it flexible, I don't think it would be, from my limited perspective, a big. Disruption in increasing class sizes, one way or the other. Um, that's just my two cents.
You're gonna increase one, you're gonna decrease one, and the kind of tiny class will be as challenging. As larger class. Because you've got less, fewer students contributing.
That's a good point, I just, I also feel like we shouldn't. Yeah, I mean. It's complicated, but especially if there's issues with bullying or other things that were brought up, like, for sure. Um. I think we should be open for the, open to be more flexible. I don't know if we, yeah, I don't know what the answer is right now.
Okay, well. Not to make any, uh, real final decisions off this, but. There's no policy committee looking at this or anything like that, this. Or, or a board meeting, so, uh. We've, we've got other stuff to do tonight, so I don't wanna spend. An hour talking about this, but I think what I, what I can do is I can. Take this document here. That I put the strike throughs in, and then, uh, we'll send that out, and. We'll bring it back in September, uh, because. Once we, once we, you know, settle on this policy, I don't worry, so. It just gives more time for public opinion, and to answer your question, Cara, you know. You know, this probably could be something in community engagement. Knowledge, could be a good problem.
But it also sounds like in practice, we are already flexible and accommodating when urgent situations arise. Like, I, I mean, at least that's what I heard Chris and Rick saying, is like. Outside of this policy, in practice, inter-school transfers requests are managed. All the time.
That's correct, Cara, there, there are certain educational decisions that we make that we don't need policy to make, um. You know, we obviously, we'd loop in the boards if, you know, uh, move from one school to other, but, uh. Right, and, and that goes back to what I was saying, just, I think, you know. Further discussion around the boards, around the purpose of this policy, and what they want, what the intent of is, and. Cause like I said, it's the, the, the exception where there's a situation around, let's say, bullying or, uh, harassment or so. You know, obviously in a small school, this happens in a lot of our schools, the SU, there's nowhere really for that child to go, and so therefore we look at. Another, you know, we're looking at this at Corey Valley, where, uh, you know, just another place because there's nowhere else for that child to go. Uh, so, you know, you know, the, the one thing, you know. Obviously, it does, it does stay, is we still would say that transportation is not provided, that's. Uh, even in those special exceptions, we, we make that very clear, we don't provide transportation, so, anyway, it's in the policy as well.
So, I mean, what you're saying, though, is, even if we create a policy that said that. Uh, there is no school choice, you have to stay in that town where you live. Uh, you can still move students around.
If there's a situation in which a baseball, say, a bowling harassment investigation, and. As part of, uh, our duties to, you know, create a. Uh, a safe environment for that, that child, or if we thought that, uh, there's no place, like, here in Wells or Middletown. Uh, you know, that there, there'd be around the, the individual all the time, don't, like. There's one fourth grade class or, or, like, if there's no else to go, we would look at. Uh, place another school just, uh, as an option. For its special, also. Uh, place the school just, uh, as an option, or it's a special one, so. That'll still be brought, you know, discussed before the board, just when people. Were a little bit driven by that, but that would be something we had to discuss, because we can't. Keep child in, in, I would say, place, just because we don't have a policy that says, sorry, you're you're stuck there, we have to look at. Oh, yeah, no, I understand the circumstance, uh, you know, why not, uh. Why have a policy that we've turned?
Well, then, this policy, again, I I believe is for non-crisis situations, if we're gonna relax. For someone to just say, hey, I'm in second grade in this school, next year I want some to go to third grade the other. We're gonna allow them, and if we allow it, what's our policy? How do we do it? I think that's what this.
I think this was also part of the merger, the idea that we are urging. Communities, these schools, so that was a lot of feeling, um. And, yeah, we're trying to get, um. In in addition, you know, why, why are we bothering you, Mark? Well, here's something we could do. Let's say you work at Middletown Springs, and you live at Wells, and you'd rather, you know, have your kid go to Old Mill Springs. Positive reason to merge.
I would say it was in ours.
That's why, that's why I'm saying, it's, just, it's, like, more than just cost savings, obviously, for the merger, it was like.
Okay, so, like I said, there's, there's a lot of this desk, so, um, we'll, we'll definitely bring it back. And perhaps one conversation, all right, uh, thank you, everyone, so, the other policy is, um. Driver's education for resident students in tuition school districts, uh.
This came about because Middletown did not have a driver's ed, which reimbursement program in Wells.
Yeah, there's statute of bullying around, there's two that were, um.
Right, and I wonder if we're calling way short.
Were back in the day.
I know.
Which is. Everything you qualify for all that, except for.
They have to get their driver's license this year, and on, anyway.
But, right, back when I was, yeah, I never got reimbursed by, uh, with those, when I first. I had paid for as much as down for a burden, they would reimburse me, because.
Well, that's well.
My, it was well, but they were, were not residents, they were residents of the district, they went to school here. But when the high school ran it and operated, so I had to do an independent, because they were New York State students across the world there. They would pay for it, review, and I had to pay the driver's ed in Vermont.
Is that because we weren't full choice?
It didn't matter, it's as a resident student, and and then you had this school.
Yes, but it's.
Yeah, I want my money.
Well, it's short. Yeah, that's really bad then.
Bad then.
Yeah, and I'm sure.
And a.
Sorry, I lost service for a minute and came back a little late, but, um. I kind of understa- are we just discussing, like, the school choice versus when we were designated with driver's ed?
Just moved on to the driver's ed, um, for resident students, integration of school district policy.
Okay, I I was just gonna say, um, as far as, like, driver's ed in Granville, when I was there, Vermont students were allowed. To do driver's ed, but New York students got first dibs, so if there were New York students that needed it, um, Vermont students. Could join after, but it was never really a problem, because New York students had to do a different five-hour course. And started at sixteen, and Vermont students got their permit at fifteen. And so there was a lot of Vermonters that did driver's ed in New York then, I'm not sure if that's still the case now that we are school choice, but. That was just how it worked for New York then.
Granville doesn't operate anymore at all, I believe. I would say no, because, uh, and I have to go back and look, but the legal reference. I think it pertains specifically to Vermont-approved, uh, courses.
Through the course, that is just what's down there, so, just because we went to a New York State school. Was not allowed, we're usually first, or they were with Vermont, we're first, but they were New York students. They looked at him, even though he lived in Middletown, we looked at him as New Yorkers.
That's, that's.
That was pretty right, correct?
But, yeah, that's.
Uh, so, um, one point is, private driver's ed currently costs eight hundred dollars? So, I I would question the four hundred dollar figure, and I don't know how that came to be, but just. It's currently eight hundred dollars, um, and the law statute says, um. A driver education and training course approved by A O E and the Department of Motor Vehicles shall be made available to students whose parent or guardian. Is a resident of Vermont and who have reached their fifteenth birthday, and who are regularly enrolled. In a public or independent school approved by the state board, so. It, the, no matter where the child goes to school, as long as the parent is a resident of this school, or the state.
I don't know who you're gonna find.
Well. Part of that approval, instead of legal reference.
So I just Googled that legal reference, and I read the first stanza of it.
Make sure that legal reference pertains to the policy. Okay, I mean, I think the the policy as a whole, uh, makes sense, looks fine, uh.
Um, and so just logistically, uh, based on information I have from other, like, areas of my life, um. The driving instructor at Mill River High School is retiring after thirty some odd years, and as of June. They had not retained a new one, so they weren't sure that. They were going to be able to offer the the level of driver's ed that they have, so. We might wanna, this might be a timely time to think about this policy, because. Driver's ed instructors are hard to come by, so there may be other schools. Maybe not offering them, or not offering as many slots as they previously had. So, just something to think about.
There, you can't even get into most of the smaller schools.
Uh, and one of the, the primary private driver's ed school in Rutland County had over one hundred students this summer. And was, as of June, was booking out to September. For classes, and charging eight hundred dollars a head.
That's good to know, um, but in terms of, uh, like, how this policy works, uh. And any changes, suggestions to this policy, um.
My question then will be, does it, does it allow New York State students to get first? That's all I wanna know.
Yes, it does, so.
By reading this, it does, I just wanna make sure what I'm at.
Really, if if you refer to that legal, uh, reference.
How much? Public schools charge the underbunds? No, BBA is not a public school, um, it's an independence.
But I'm assuming they're gonna be high.
So, Corey Valley, uh, we will be offering full-time driver's ed during the school day, and we, we actually now hired.
So you can't even take.
We've hired a driver's ed, now the individual we hired was off, was last year we contracted with. Um, and so, uh, we have a creative driver's ed position across our country, so we're, we're very fortunate.
So, but nobody can take it from outside of the school.
So, what, what we would look at is. If there was an opportunity for, to offer, say, summer offer, like, we we told our. Our students that'll be done during the course of the school year, um, but there might be an, an exception where there might be a summer offer, we have not. For that yet, but that would be, because that's not part of our co- uh, contract position, is is teaching, is teacher contract is just during the calendar year, under.
So, I I'm just wondering, is the, the price of a public. Schools' driver's ed program lower than the private driver's ed program? I'm assuming it is.
Yes.
Yeah, probably, probably is. But probably just. Run on the city of the church. Uh, so, because these are choice students. And it's data average, depending, school also. What do we know about?
And I do think this four hundred. About, my recollection was because Brotherstown, losing, sort of situation would set the rate at four hundred, I think it was. Well, right, but I think that's the same concern that they were having as well, so, four hundred dollars, we're usually halfway there, uh, so, just. That's what it was when we talked about it, it was, uh, it's just the offset cost. Why? I I can't remember. And, um. Looking still, it's.
Well, I think you ought to consider finding out what, if there are any public high schools that are offering it, what, what they're.
I mean, at at an old M S U perspective, the mindset is, we do have. Three high schools that offer driver's ed, that a student chooses to not. Participate, goes elsewhere, but that's, is it the board's responsibility, they're on the hook for. Programs that are being offered to schools, they choose to attend, is that, so, if that's part of school choice, you may choose, and. If if there's, say, a driver program, it's the school's responsibility. I know this is same language, but I know that there has been discussion across the state and superintendents, which we're all drivers says. Uh, you know, if a family chooses to enroll their child, they're, knowing that driver's ed's up there, and. What is the responsibility of the local board for that choice? Okay, well, we can consider. What's that?
All things to consider.
Oh, yeah, well, we get to figure, uh. Bring this, bring this back, you know, consider those. Keep working on policy.
I mean, but this is, this is a policy that has a potential impact on our budget. Because if all of a sudden the six students at one of the school choice high schools can't get driver's ed. Then potentially, over the course of one to two years, that's six students who's, about four hundred dollars of reimbursement. Which is relatively small in our budget, but is also. An impact on the budget.
So, it's not well-known, too.
No.
Uh, I ran into a community member last year, uh, was excited about it, and, uh. Just thought it was some, you know, this was excellent. So, a lot of people already know that, so, uh, she found out from another parent, so. Okay, yeah, it's, uh, it could, it may or may not have, that's a good Lewis question. All right, so we do have an executive session, um. I'll go ahead and, um, um, make a motion to move the executive session. Uh, for confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services, uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, uh, motion carries, so we do have a separate link, uh, and the.